Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the village board meeting of January 10. Please join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Thomas.
Trustee Purcell. Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis.
Here.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Here.
Trustee Hyferman.
Here.
Trustee Roman.
Here.
Representing staff this evening, to my left is our village manager Napoleon Haney, to my right, our village attorney Chris Cummings. So the audience is right. Our police chief Denise McGrath, finance director Dennis Bubinak, village planner Valerie Burston, economic and community development director Angela Maseris, public works director John Schaefer, and our newest addition, our assistant village manager Tyler Hall. Mr. Haney.
Yes, just want to introduce Tyler Hall to everyone. Tyler spent roughly five years in with the city of Highland Park before he moved on to the village of Arlington Heights, so he's with us now. So we will have a formal oath of office swearing in ceremony at a later date, but we're just happy to have Tyler as part of our staff. So can we just give him?
Welcome. The minutes of the public hearing of December 13th and also the regular meeting of December 13th. Any additions or corrections? Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis. Trustee Harris Jones. Trustee Hyferman. Trustee Roman. May I have a motion to approve both of those minutes, please?
Second.
Then moved by trustee Purcell, seconded by trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell. Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis. Trustee Harris Jones. Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. The claims list, and it's a corrected amount, in the amount of $1,523,398. Any comments or questions, trustee Purcell? Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis. Trustee Harris Jones.
All questions have been answered.
Trustee Hyferman. Trustee Roman. May I have a motion to approve the claims list, please?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by trustee Roman, seconded by trustee Harris Jones. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell. Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis. Trustee Harris Jones. Trustee Hyferman. Trustee Roman.
The claims list is approved. Of that, roughly $1,500,000 claims, those three items comprise the majority of that. Our payment to the city of Chicago Heights for water was $273,000. One month's employees' health insurance, $236,000. And our annual payment to Irma, our general insurance risk management agency, $706,000. That was $1,215,000, or 78% of that claims list. Hear from the audience, if anyone would like to address the board on any subject not on the agenda, please raise your hand. If not, oath of office. Chief McGrath.
Thank you all for coming out tonight to congratulate and celebrate Dennis Leaks on his promotion to sergeant. Dennis, if you and your father would like to step up here. Thank you. Dennis began his career with the Homewood Police Department on October 5th, 2015. Prior to joining the Homewood Police Department, Dennis served as a patrol officer with the South Holland Police Department. During his career in Homewood, Dennis has served as a patrol officer, an acting watch commander, and a field training officer. Dennis attended Northern Illinois University, where in 2006, he received his Bachelor of Arts in Political Science, and in 2010, he received his Master of Public Administration. Dennis is currently a captain in the United States Army Reserve. Dennis's promotion to sergeant was effective January 1st, 2023, and I look forward to working with him in this new role. Having been appointed to the Office of Police Sergeant. For the village of Homewood. To solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the municipal ordinances for the village of Homewood.
And the municipal ordinances for the village of Homewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police sergeant.
The duties of police sergeant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Dennis, I know you have a speech prepared, do you want to say a few words? It's a little known fact, Dennis started as an intern with the village of Homewood, and that's where he learned everything, working in the village.
I just want to say thank you to mayor, village manager, members of the board, staff. As the mayor just mentioned, some of these people have known me from the very beginning, since I started any work in municipal government. So good, I stayed as an intern and I came back as a full-time employee, which is always a good sign. So I just thank you for all the help I've gotten and support from a lot of officers in the back, some still with the department, some that have moved on, but just see a lot of people here who helped me, even in ways that you don't necessarily realize along the way. So I appreciate you guys' support and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Now, before we begin the consent agenda, there's one item on the consent agenda that we're going to move up and handle separately, and that's item C, the retirement of Sergeant Darren Easter. May I have a motion from the board to approve resolution R. 3134 honoring Darren Easter? It's been moved by trustee Purcell, seconded by trustee Hyferman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell. Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis. Trustee Harris Jones. Trustee Hyferman. Trustee Roman.
The resolution is approved. If you would read the resolution, please.
A resolution honoring Darren K. Easter on his retirement from the village of Homewood, whereas Darren Easter began his career in law enforcement in 2003 at the Crestwood Police Department as a part-time police officer. He joined the Homewood Police Department on November 17, 2008, as a full-time police officer. And whereas Darren Easter served in the United States Army and Army Reserves from January 1997 through January 2003, and whereas Darren Easter was assigned to the Criminal Investigations Unit as a tactical officer from November 2012 until November 2016, and whereas Darren Easter was promoted to the rank of police sergeant on November 22, 2016, and whereas Darren Easter passed his considerable knowledge and expertise onto other members of the department as an instructor for firearms and served as the department's range master, and whereas Darren Easter was appointed as an instructor for ASP, OC, rapid deployment, and use of force, thus contributing to the future success and professionalism of the police department. And whereas Darren Easter served as a moderator, instructor, and point of contact for outside agencies on the Veritra Use of Force and De-escalation Training Simulator, and whereas Darren Easter, while on extended light duty assignment, stepped in to oversee the evidence room while the regular evidence custodian was on medical leave. During this time, Sergeant Easter worked to update procedures and streamline operations. And whereas Darren Easter has been a leader who is respected and held in high esteem by his friends, professional peers, and members of the community for conducting himself and representing the village of Homewood with the utmost concern for fairness, service, and professionalism. And whereas Darren Easter retired on December 12, 2022, after 14 years, excuse me, of dedicated service to the village of Homewood. His service to the police department and the citizens of Homewood is hereby recognized. Therefore, be it resolved by the president and board of trustees of the village of Homewood that Darren K. Easter be honored and commended for 14 years of outstanding dedicated service to the citizens of Homewood. On behalf of the citizens of Homewood, the president and board of trustees hereby extend best wishes to him as he retires.
Chief McGrath.
I'd just like to thank Darren for his service and his contribution to the police department. He has definitely made the police department and our other officers has been a great contribution to all of us.
Same thing Dennis said, I'd just like to thank the village, the board for the opportunity. It was absolutely my pleasure. Everybody here in the audience, all of everybody here that came out to support, I truly appreciate it. It's been fun, and you're wearing my badge, so.
Darren is going to be staying on with us in a part-time capacity to continue to contribute to our training program, our range program, and some other miscellaneous things.
Thank you, chief. Thank you all. Thank you. Congratulations. Mrs. Thomas, the vote minus item C.
The board is asked to approve the reappointment of Valerie Warnesby to the Economic Development Committee for a two-year term expiring January 10, 2025. The reappointment of Susan Goldberg and Odell Fields to the Ethics Commission for three-year terms ending January 10, 2026. Board is asked to approve resolution R. 3133 honoring police officer Paul Nixel on his retirement from the police department after 21 years. He is recognized for his work with the Criminal Investigations Unit, was a member of the South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force, and suburban major accident reconstruction team. The board is asked to approve ordinance M. 2234 authorizing the sale of a 2017 Ford utility vehicle from the Public Works Department. The board is asked to pass ordinance M. 2235 directing the solicitation of alternate proposals for the development of the property at 2066 Ridge Road, the northeast corner at Ridge and Harwood. The site is part of the downtown transit-oriented development redevelopment project area. The village has a proposal to construct a five-story building with business on the first floor and residential units on floors 2 through 5. Board will accept alternate proposals through February 14. Board is asked to approve the transfer of $120,000 from the village's contingency account. The allocations are $20,000 to the manager's office to cover labor relations negotiation expenses, $60,000 to cover repairs to police vehicles sustained through accidents, and $20,000 to vote the police and public works departments for increases in fuel costs. Board is asked to authorize an amendment to the village's agreement with EMA Building Corporation to provide $12,500 in financial assistance from the South Gate Tiff Facade and Property Improvement Program for building improvements at 18676 Dixie Highway. This is an amendment to a previous Tiff Funding Agreement the board approved in November after construction costs came in higher than originally presented. The board is asked to pass resolution R. 3135 authorizing President Hofelt to enter into a municipal aid box alarm system master agreement to participate in the municipal aid box alarm system in Illinois.
Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience with regard to any of these matters? Would you please restate item H?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have H?
Oh, I'm sorry, special use permit. For B1 holistic 18203 Dixie Highway, passing ordinance M. 2236 granting a special use permit for a salon spa establishment in the B1 Central Business District at 1A203 Dixie Highway.
Thank you. That brings us up to day. Comments or questions from anyone in the audience with regard to these matters? Board comments, trustee Purcell. Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis. Trustee Harris Jones. Trustee Hyferman.
There's a lot there, but I don't have a count of them.
Trustee Roman. May I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, please?
Second.
Been moved by trustee Purcell, seconded by trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell. Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis. Trustee Harris Jones. Trustee Hyferman. Trustee Roman.
The consent agenda is approved. New business for the last, how many months? Six months? They've nine months. The village planning and zoning commission has been working very hard on refining and creating new ways to review the zoning code and the zoning map. Ms. Maseris, if you'd please come forward. We have a number of items, I believe seven items this evening to consider with regard to their labors.
Thank you. Good evening. Under consideration tonight is a comprehensive amendment to the zoning ordinance and to the zoning map on application by the village of Homewood. As the village president stated, this has been many months and would probably take many hours if we presented it in detail. All of the zoning ordinance and map and supporting documents were within the village board packet, and they are also available on the village website. I will highlight some of the major areas of change in the code and map, and staff is available for questions after the presentation. The current Homewood zoning ordinance and zoning map last underwent a comprehensive amendment in early 2002. In the 20 years since its adoption, approximately 40 individual amendments have been made, and these are made usually by requests from property owners or business owners. For example, veterinary clinics were added to the B1 and B4 districts. We also make changes when the legislation changes, such as when cannabis dispensaries became legal. The proposed amendments are the culmination of 18 months of work by the Planning and Zoning Commission, residents of our community, a committee of staff appointed and elected officials. This included our village planner Valerie Burston, village attorney Chris Cummings, trustee Hyferman, and village manager Napoleon Haney. We also had input from the building division staff, the village arborist and village engineer. The process began in December of 2020 with a request for proposals, review, and interviews of the proposals and selection of a planning consultant, Housiel Levine's Associates in May of 2021. With the consultant, we identified key policy direction, analyzed existing regulations in the built environment. Online surveys, mapping tools, in-person and Zoom meetings were available for community input. The village held seven public meetings, advertised for the meetings, posted the materials on a dedicated page of the village website, which is still available, and spread the news through the local newspapers, publications, and community events. The detailed public involvement document is also available in the board packets and on the website. The scope of work for the zoning ordinance was to modernize the code, improve the visual representations by adding graphics, update some of the terminology and definitions, remove any inconsistencies, and then ensure legal compliance. So that meant amending some of the permitted and special use lists, clarifying definitions and uses. At the outset of the process, our consultant met with the staff and the officials to identify preliminary issues in the existing ordinance. Some of the primary topics decided were regulation of event spaces, multi-use facilities, accessory dwelling units, sustainable design, open space preservation, compliance with the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, parking paths for residences who could only park one vehicle, integration of the landscape plan into other commercial districts, and standardization of our intake and review processes for zoning applications. The proposed ordinance will also have a new format. It is integrated into the numbering structure and format of the municipal code, and is available on municipalcode.com on the village's website, also individually as a hard copy document. So the restructuring really achieved our objective of being more user-friendly and cohesive. The primary changes to the village zoning map are in the business districts. The existing B1 Central Business District covered this area that you see in white and dark pink. This B1 Central Business District was concentrated into a smaller area within that area that it was primarily to focus on restaurant and retail uses in order to make the downtown a vibrant destination and rename to the downtown core. The remaining areas of the current B1, as well as a few residential areas within that area, were rezoned to B2, which was a new district called the Downtown Transition District. And because of that new B2 being only the Downtown Transition District, we have also recommended rezoning some of the other commercial areas that are currently B2 into B3. So the North Gate, South Gate, Kedzie, and 183rd, and all of those, the areas in between that you see in red are now B3. So drafts of the zoning ordinance and the zoning map were presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission at public hearings November 10, continued to December 8th. All seven of the commission members were present. They voted unanimously to recommend approval of both the update to the zoning ordinance and the zoning map, subject to a few conditions. One of them was more restrictive locations for salons and spas. Another was updating the terminology to be gender-inclusive throughout the document. So these revisions have all been incorporated into the final draft that is now before the village board. The topic of short-term rentals, such as Airbnb, was discussed in detail throughout the process. This item has not been included in the proposed zoning ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Commission requested direction from the village board and the village attorney, and staff will discuss this subject at a future board meeting to provide direction on whether and how that should be part of the zoning code. So the update to the zoning ordinance also triggered some corresponding amendments to the municipal code in places where there's an overlap in regulations. These areas are related to fences, live-work units, signs. We anticipate the sign code being revised completely within the next year. The only real change was to reflect the new zoning map because signs are more restrictive in the B1 district, and now they will be more restrictive in the B1 and B2. So that reflects that change. We have also recommended an update to the fee schedule that reflects new uses, adjustments in fees to be more in line with other communities, revisions to the planning and zoning processes, new zoning processes, such as limited use permits, and consolidation of some of the fees that were replicated in both building and zoning. So village staff collaborated between all departments to review the proposed amendments to the municipal code and fee schedule. The planning and zoning review is not required for the municipal code. Village board vote is required, and if passed, appropriate sections of the municipal code will be amended to reflect the changes. The recommendation is to pass all ordinances, adopting a comprehensive amendment to the village of Homewood zoning ordinance, the village of Homewood zoning map, amendments to the municipal code, and updates to the fee schedule, and all of the ordinance are included in the board packet. So if any questions or would like more details, explanations on any subject, staff is in attendance tonight to answer questions. Village planner Valerie Burston has done a tremendous amount of work on this project since joining the staff, and seven months ago, seven months? She's reviewed countless drafts, coordinated input, comments, research, created numerous documents and applications and exhibits, and so just to bring the zoning code and map process to completion. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience? If not, I would like to call upon trustee Hyferman, who is the board liaison to the Plank Commission Zone Board. He attended all those sessions, and your comments, please.
The comprehensive zoning text and map amendment, comprehensive is an understatement because I think when I first joined the process, you know, I found that my role was sort of to sit in awe at the professionalism that I saw going on. You know, it's a tough topic and a huge topic, and it will have, really, forever, it will change the profile of things. It's so important. When I say professionalism, Angela Maseris, she led things and was just impressive, that's all I can say. Valerie, midway through the process, I assume day one, because I think I, we were in a meeting day one, it was unbelievable how prepared and how you grabbed the ball and started running with it. It's just amazing. The involvement of village attorney Chris Cummings, Jackie with House Olene, our consulting partner, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Fred Suziga, Dexter, and of course the rest of them, Dexter and Fred really participated on another level. One thing to note about this project, there was an unprecedented level of community engagement and input that was part of day one, to make sure that everybody was included, and there was multiple opportunities and avenues for people to jump in and, you know, make themselves know, make their ideas known. A lot of community engagement makes this a better document. Yeah, there's still things to do. There's lots that isn't done. There's, you know, open topics, but as we approve it tonight, what a tremendous thing, and it will remain forever a work in progress, so.
And thank you for your participation. We appreciate that. Board comments, trustee Purcell.
I just want to thank you guys for all the work that you put into this, and I want to thank our community who all came out and participated and gave their thoughts and their opinions, because that's really, it really happens, it really matters. Thank you, trustee Hyferman, for sitting in awe. I know I would have been the same way, but this is something that was, you know, needed and it was timed, and I'm really glad that we're getting the ball rolling on it. Thank you so much.
Trustee Baloo.
Thank you all for the work and thank the community for weighing down the kind of process that is so busy.
Trustee Willis.
Just want to echo that. Thanks for this huge undertaking and doing such a great job tackling it. We really appreciate it.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Thanks again for your hard work. Really appreciate it.
And furthermore, I forgot to mention.
I'm sorry, we're skipping over.
His involvement too, leadership needed him.
Trustee Roman.
I just echo everything that's already been said. Thank you both very much, and everyone that was involved in our community.
This was an extra. This was an extraordinary work and the gentleman on either side of me, they contributed immensely to it as well. Our village manager Napoleon Haney, our village attorney Chris Cummings, they were intimately involved. With that being said, may I have a motion to approve items A through G? It's been moved by trustee Purcell, seconded by trustee Baloo. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you all. Mr. Boobinack. Discussion of liquor license for crab bags at 18681 Dixie Highway.
Yeah, we have two liquor license requests tonight to wrap up the meeting. First is crab bags. Crab bags has requested a 7B liquor license for their proposed location at 18681 Dixie Highway. Class 7B liquor license allows for the sale of beer and wine for on-premise consumption only. No more than 25% of the sales can be from liquor. Liquor commissioner supports issuing the requested license. Crab bags has been building out the space at 18681 Dixie Highway and is preparing to open in the near future. If the board is in favor of this request, staff will be directed to begin the liquor license application process after successfully completing all steps required for obtaining a village of Homewood liquor license and ordinance to increase the number of allowed class 7B liquor licenses. One for crab bags will be presented at a board meeting for approval. I invite the applicant to come up and add to anything I said or answer any questions.
Ms. Walker. Tell us about crab bags. Been a while since you were up here.
Hello, everyone. I'm Harris Walker. I'm the proud owner of Crab Bags. We've been building out for a little while now since February of this year. We don't have a date yet, but as soon as we have a date, the village of Homewood will be the first to know. We'll be selling seafood boil, a nice messy, very delicious meal. I can't wait till you guys try it. I don't know if you all have any questions for me.
We'll get to that in a second.
I'm sorry?
Just stay there. We'll get to that in a second. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, I, I hope that you guys approve me for the liquor license, but I don't have anything else to add.
Comments or questions from anyone in the audience? If not, board comments, question, trustee Purcell.
I'm looking forward to this. It's the first time right here, right by my house. And I love crab legs. So I'm very happy that this is moving along and supporting.
Thank you.
Trustee Baloo.
Thank you. Looking forward to the success of the business.
Trustee Willis.
Can't wait to try it. I wish you brought up samples tonight.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Congratulations and look forward to your business opening in our community.
Thank you.
Trustee Hyferman.
Good luck to you. And I do have a question for Dennis. Can you clarify a 7B liquor license?
Again, it is a license that came up with, I don't remember how many years ago, but we opted to go with a limitation on how much sales are coming from liquor. So therefore, beer and wine in this case can't operate at more than 25% of your sales in liquor.
Trustee Roman.
I'm just also very excited for you to open. Congratulations. I think it's going to be a hit. I think people are going to love it in our community and I can't wait.
Awesome. Thank you.
With that, may I have a motion to approve directing staff to prepare an ordinance for increasing the number of liquor licenses of a class 7B for crab bags?
Second.
Then moved by trustee Purcell, seconded by trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis. Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. Mr. Boobinack.
For second item, United Liquor holds a class two liquor license for its location at 17532 Dixie Highway. A class two liquor license allows for the retail sale of liquor for off-premise consumption. The owner of United Liquors proposes to sell the business. Mr. Ron Patel currently holds a class two liquor license for family wine and liquors located at 18707 and would like to purchase the property that's currently United Liquors. Mr. Patel, the new potential owner is requesting that additional class two liquor license be made available in order to operate United Liquor location. If the board is in favor of this request, staff will be directed to begin the liquor license application process after successfully completing all the steps required of obtaining a village of Homewood liquor license and ordinance increasing the allowed number of class two liquor licenses for the United Liquor location 17532 Dixie Highway will be brought to a future board meeting. I invite the applicant to come up and add to anything I said and answer any questions.
Mr. Patel, sure.
Good evening, everyone. As I mentioned, you know, we already own a family wine liquor and also in a community floss more, we already have a wine bar. And I find out, you know, United Liquor for sale. So and I had a soft meeting with the mayor before as well. And they mentioned me, if you want to purchase United Liquor, then I was like, yes. You know, I'm already in a retail business for almost 10 or 12 years. So that would be a good choice, you know, and we are doing a great business with the family wine in Homewood. So we like to have a same location. It's two different areas and two different communities. So we like to support and, you know, as I, I think village mentioned that we like to have more grocery item in the, in that location. So we're going to try to build it up and also right now the location looks really uncomfortable. So we like to bring it to the, just like a family wine and liquor, you know, like a more atmosphere clean and everything like that.
Okay. Mr. Patel and I've had numerous discussions on this and he is going to try to bring the food element in there. Yes, it used to be when it was the old Warren and Jack's and it's now strictly a liquor store. So you'll start off with the basics.
Yes. So we're going to have like, you know, daily usage items like, you know, bread, eggs, cheese and some other like daily usage, you know, ketchup, then some canned foods and stuff like that.
Okay. And hopefully you will be able to expand it based on the volume that you will be doing.
Yes. So, you know, we like to have our projection to the million dollar and then you'd be like to have a grocery store, grocery sell up to like a 15 to 20% in the first couple of years.
We'd like to see that. Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience? Board comments, trustee Purcell.
You've done a great job over a family liquor. So I wish you luck.
Thank you. Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis. Trustee Harris Jones.
Thank you.
Trustee Hyferman.
Congratulations. Do you plan to name it Family Liquors as well?
No, we're just going to keep continuing the United Liquor. Yeah. So we're going to have a different corporation and everything going to be different separate. Thank you.
Trustee Roman.
Thank you.
With that, may I have a motion to direct staff to create a liquor license, class two for Mr. Patel with his purchase for the United Liquor location at 17532 Dixie Highway. Then moved by trustee Purcell, seconded by trustee Baloo. Willis, I'm sorry. Trustee Willis, roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell. Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. General board discussion, trustee Purcell.
Hope everyone had wonderful holiday season.
Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis.
Just thinking about the retirees, wishing them the great phase of their lives and they, and I'm thankful that they served this community.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Happy New Year to each and all of you and great to see everyone.
Trustee Hyferman.
Welcome to Tyro.
With that, may I have a motion to adjourn, please? Then moved, moved by trustee Purcell, seconded by trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Baloo. Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Trustee Roman. Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all.